Call this meeting to order, please. The first item on the agenda is to move on to close meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Submove.
Addendum.
Don't I do the addendum after we go on a closed meeting?
You have to add it.
You gotta do that at an open meeting. Okay, that's...
Okay.
All right.
My bad.
First item on the agenda is an addendum. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property, or discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position and negotiating strategy of a public body. And that is discussion on the regional tourism office.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Hi.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Aye. All right. The next item is to go on a closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Submove.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Seven ayes.
And the subject on the closed meeting is section 2.2-3711, "Discussion concerning prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry, where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interested in locating or expanding its facilities in the community." And that's project number 2012-0010. The second item is discussion or consideration in acquisition of real property for public purpose, or the disposition of publicly held property, or the discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or the negotiating strategy of a public body. And that is for the old Elliston-Lafayette Elementary School, former Plum Creek-Greenbach site, and former Texas Hollow Road Park.
And the tourism.
And the tourism office. And then the third is -1, "Discussion or consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation by specific offerers, appointees of employees of any public body." And that is for the Economic Development Authority and for the Plan on Commission. We're going to close meeting. Call this meeting back to order, please. And the first item on the agenda is to move on to closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Submove.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. And the next item?
Roll call.
I'm sorry. Roll call, please.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Can I say aye?
Aye. And the next item is certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia required that certification by the Board of such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveyed to the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Seven ayes.
All right. The next item is our invocation. And if everybody will please rise and we'll consider the things we have to work on. And following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Meadows.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
And the next item is public address. We have nobody signed up for public address. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak at this public address, please step forward, give your name and address, and you have five minutes, please. Seeing no one, we'll close the public address. We have no addendums this evening. The next item is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
In regards to... I am the current chairman of the New River Valley ASAP, and so I don't think it necessarily be appropriate for me to vote on another member, whether they should be able to join. So I'm going to abstain from the consent agenda, or we could just pull it out, whichever. I think we're voting on adding Ms. Pettit to the ASAP board. Is that correct?
You should just pull it out.
Mm-hmm.
Pull it out and vote on it afterwards.
If we could do that.
I'll redo my motion to withdraw that particular item.
Okay.
So it could be voted on separately.
And we seconded it?
I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Seven ayes.
And now, need a motion?
Yes, I move the motion that we appoint Mary Pettis.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Moving seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Would abstain.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Aye. Okay. Do we have a motion to go into work session, please?
I meant, have we voted on the whole consent agenda?
We did that first.
Where was I?
You voted.
You voted, yes. I can't remember exactly where I was.
All right. Do we have a motion to go into work session?
Yes, second.
Second. Moving seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Did I forget anybody? Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Polletis?
Seven ayes.
And the first item on our work session is the Roanoke Valley Area MPO. And I guess we'll have Mr. Brew come and speak to this matter, please.
Good evening. The... I have been attending the Roanoke Valley MPO meetings on behalf of Montgomery County while they were working through the process of adding Montgomery County to the section down in the Elliston area to the Roanoke MPO. And until they were official... until Montgomery County was officially added as a member by a change of their bylaws, they've worked considerably slower than we did on adding our new members up here. But that has been done when I was last here, the... in November, or October, I guess it was. That was the process they began. They also established a study area, which I had given you a copy of what they were considering. And along with the bylaws, they have approved that study area. In your agenda packet, you have a summary that I wrote, as well as a copy of the bylaws that were approved, where Montgomery County was added. And one provision that they have in there in bylaws, different than what we have up here, is that representation is based on the population of the area. And they have cut off of 7,500 people as the differential between one vote on the MPO or two. And that's not any new requirement. That's what's been in their bylaws for quite a few years. But with that, Montgomery County is entitled to one vote on the Roanoke MPO. And also, in accordance with their bylaws, at least half of the votes. So being saying you can't have half a member, the one member does have to be an elected official of Montgomery County for the policy board. So that was the report that I had sent, and I think subsequently that Craig has gotten a letter from Wayne Strickland. It was in April 16th, real recent.
Yep. It's in your packet as well.
Asking for Montgomery County to appoint a member. If there are any other questions about that part, I'd be glad to field them. If not, there were a couple of items that I really wanted to mention that are of interest to Montgomery County that the MPO down there is doing. And I do have them highlighted in my summary as well. One thing that they're slightly different than our MPO up here in that they have a population of over 200,000, which gives them some funding to allocate towards construction projects over and above what the Commonwealth Transportation Board allocates. It's not instead of, it's in addition to. And for the next six years, they have about $28 million that they're going to allocate to specific projects. What the process is, is the MPO picks them out and sends them... gets them reviewed to be sure they're acceptable projects to federal highways or federal transit administrations. And if so, then they're sent to VDOT program. Don't know whether there are any projects within the small area of Montgomery that is in Roanoke MPO. But if there are any projects in those... in that particular area, as a member, you're certainly entitled to make a request for them. I think they... in the letter, Wayne Strickland wrote to Craig, it's going to be a pretty fast-moving process because Commonwealth Transportation Board does all their allocations in June. So with that being said, there was another item in relation to the RSTP, and I think that's highlighted also in a newspaper... a copy of a newspaper article that was in the Roanoke Times regarding the intermodal facility. And I know that at the MPO meeting, there was at least some interest from City Roanoke member Rupert Cutler to use some of the $28 million to assist in developing the intermodal facility. And while the article does say that, it doesn't specifically go into a lot of detail about why that was of interest to him. And the primary reason is that in some of their economic development efforts lately, they've... that's one of the factors that are used by some manufacturing firms in to whether to locate here or not. And they had several that X Roanoke off the list because that facility was not in place. And so that's the history. I want to give you a little history about... I'm sure you read the article on the paper, but that's where Rupert Cutler was coming from in making that request. That being said, is, you know, it's certainly... I think Montgomery County needs to act pretty quickly to get somebody on the MPO that can participate in those discussions and vote when the RSTP funds are assigned in May. So...
Mr. Chair, if I could add just one or two comments to Dan's. I did have the opportunity to talk to Wayne Strickland today. He had called and mentioned that several of the localities that are part of the MPO had asked that they consider a study of the economic impacts of an intermodal facility in the region because of what Dan mentioned in terms of Roanoke recently being not included on several lists because of an intermodal facility not being nearby. So that discussion is going to ramp up a good bit in this MPO. And so it's going to be very important. I agree with Dan that we move pretty quickly to identify and get appointed one of you, I'm assuming, to be on that group because it's going to be important to have input.
Wasn't land the problem? Was land the problem? That I read in that letter? I mean, in that edit? In the newspaper article? Or the letter that sent... No, the article was sent to us, not newspaper.
They definitely have some challenges in terms of finding marketable land of sufficient size. But they do also appear to be concerned about the lack of an intermodal facility. Several of them do.
The thing that I noticed in the paper was that they included Pulaski as a site. And that's, you know, that's what I've been... since day one, I've said, you know, try to get them... somebody to listen and say, hey, the Dublin exit up here is ideal, and somebody needs to carry that to Roanoke to let them know that, hey, we have got a place that wants it. It's a perfect spot. And the meeting that we were down there, I asked a specific question is how far away does a rail need to be? And they said there was no specific distances. That the distance... short or distance didn't make a whole lot of difference as long as they had one. Well, if it was in Pulaski or Dublin, which is not that far from right here, they would have one, along with us and anybody else that wanted to use it. And I can't, for the life of me, see how they cannot go up there and try to bring that road across that river down there with it not being able to flood and being able to get those boxes underneath the rubber tracks.
Gary, when I ran, I talked with some of the folks from Norfolk and Southern on the issue. And one of the things that they talked about was that they wanted it on this side of where I live, in Walton. They want to be able to take the cargo... they want it to come in to the Elliston area from both the west and the north. And they want to be able to go out to the west and the north. And the main line to the west goes through Radford. But then it splits off right there at Walton. And then the main line north goes into Bluefield, and then on into Ohio.
And I understand every bit of that. And I understood it until I was talking to the Attorney General one day on the phone, and he let it slip that they were going to start having one that went through Tennessee. And that they could pick up out there and just as easily as they could pick up down here. Now, he didn't say all of that, but he did say that they were going to have one going to Tennessee. And that, up until that point, was never, ever mentioned. They said they weren't going to do that. So that is a site that could be had because that's a site that they're going to be coming through there anyhow, and probably going to be coming through there now quicker than they're going to be coming the other way.
Well, they were saying that the maximum distance between intermodals... I may be wrong on this, but was 1,500 miles? The maximum distance?
I thought it was five.
Huh?
I thought it was 500.
Well, they were saying it was larger than that. But, I mean, even if it's 500, it would still work. But it's more like...
And they were talking about going all the way down the Ched and New River.
Yeah. Well, they're talking about going from Harrisburg upstate to New York somewhere by the Great Lakes, then coming back down 81 till they get not where we are, but further down toward Tennessee. And then... But they also have one that's coming across the south part, going through, what, Birmingham? Is it Birmingham they're going through? And they're trying to...
I don't know.
They kept saying, when I was at the conference, that they weren't really excited about east-west where the intermodal was coming through our way. But they were more excited about north-south going to... going through and down 81 until it hits, like, what, in Knoxville, where they've got crossing interstates or whatever it is.
Plus where you're running 40.
Yeah. And that's what they were talking about. But then that was a couple of years ago, so... Or a year ago, yeah. I don't know.
I think we're straying a little off-topic here, talking about, you know, the intermodal. I think that, you know...
It goes along the same way.
Well, it does. I mean, this is a conversation. I think that that's the point of Mr. Meadows bringing this up, is that whoever our representative is to the Roanoke MPO will be having this discussion. But we don't... I don't think we need to.
Now, do we want to discuss the possibility of a representative and order an after-work session?
That would be good, simply because their first... As Dan noted, I got the letter on the 16th, and Wayne reminded me that, well, the first meeting is April 25th. That's this week.
Okay.
It would be great, you know, and I know that would be short notice for whoever may be the person that is appointed.
Things happen on Thursday.
But...
And do we have anybody who would be interested in serving on that?
I would be interested in serving, but I cannot be there on Thursday. The ASAP board that we... that y'all just appointed Ms. Pettit to is meeting this Thursday. And so there's no way I could make both meetings. And I'm the chairman of the ASAP board at this point in time. So I could not be there. But I would be interested in serving. But I don't want to mislead anybody. I missed the very first meeting, which sounds like it's going to be a very important one.
What Thursday does it happen on?
This week.
The fourth. It's... They have set their meetings for the fourth Thursday at 1:00, which, you know, I'm a little concerned with that because we don't even have our representative on board yet to give an opinion as to whether that's a good meeting time, but...
Is that once?
Once a month.
A month?
Yes, sir. Every fourth Thursday at 1:00 p.m.
And what you can do, and that might take care of Chris's problem, is you can have... you appoint one member and then appoint an alternate.
That's true.
Because they realize that everybody can't come to every meeting.
Yes, that's... Thank you. Because we do just have one vote, but they did strongly suggest an alternate be appointed as well. And I agree with that, so...
Okay.
So I just have a question about this. So the member would be like anything else, like the member would represent their board. And the member would be coming back and saying, these are the issues that we're going to be discussing, and I need your... I need to know what the consensus of this board is when I go represent the board. Is that correct?
It's just like how it'd be over here. Craig and Ms. Perkins represent this board on the MPO. And anything that's handled there out of the ordinary, I would expect them to let you know what's going on. And if there's any input needed, certainly the board should do that.
And you don't know whether it's a pre-agenda that comes out before the meeting?
There is an agenda that... and it's posted online. They don't send one out. It's on the Roanoke... actually, the Allegheny Regional Commission website. You can download the agenda.
Is it posted, like, before our board would have a regular meeting, before they would meet?
Oh, yeah. I suspect it's posted now. I think it was sent out last... I think they send it out a week in advance, but a reminder that it's available on the website. So you can go look at it right now.
If Chris wants to go, since I'm on this MPA board, I don't know whether I could do anything do anything that's coming Thursday or not, but I would be happy to alternate, I mean, be an alternate if you can't go sometime.
Well, and, and I misspoke a little bit when I saw it was at one o'clock. I was thinking it was in the evening hours, like our typical meetings are, so that would make it much more difficult for me, as far as when court's scheduled. They don't understand that a board supervisor's meeting, anything after five o'clock, and it's very easy for me to do, uh, but I, I should have checked and seen that it was a meeting at one o'clock.
It's at one o'clock every Thursday.
That, that's going to be really difficult for me.
What Thursday, I mean?
Just because it's during the work hours, and, and like I said, the judge just says, "Well, I want you to be here," so I don't want...
Yeah, it's very limiting to people that have other jobs, that's what these things mean.
I do, too.
Solid Waste Authority.
Oh, well, you can't miss that one.
Do they meet on the fourth Thursday?
I don't know about the four. We have it, have, uh, on Thursday, but I don't remember what Thursday. We've got one coming up.
If it's this week, it's the fourth Thursday.
No, this...
Actually, you had one, I know you had one two weeks ago Thursday because I saw Lance Turpenny before he went to the Solid Waste Authority meeting, and that would have been the second Thursday. I don't know if it's, I don't know if, I don't know if that's your regular meeting time or not.
If, if my meeting, because, see, then I've got the one for up at the solid, the waste, up at New River, that is on a Wednesday sometime, and sometime it gets to Thursday, so... I just better not commit for anything that I don't, I don't have my calendar with me, and I, I can't tell you.
Isaac T. Brown?
I'll be glad to look at my calendar, and if nobody else will take it, and see if I possibly can, but...
I don't think nobody else is going to take it, so look at your calendar and things, uh, because, uh, I'm looking, I'm, I'm all over the place, man, I'm in...
I would be, I would go, but not this Thursday because I have to go to Charlottesville, so...
I would.
I say, and then I have the highway safety that's on Thursday.
I guess I can do it, but I'll have to know where we're going and what we want to do, and how hard, uh, I need to push for what we need, you know, so I would need to be brought up to speed by Dan and by Craig. Uh, I don't mind going, but, uh, and I, I can go, I'll go this time, and if you want me to continue, or if I feel like I can, then I would, but, um...
I would be, want to be an alternate.
Yeah, if you'd be the alternate, but, um, I'll be happy to go this Thursday, but I will need to talk with both of you all to really, um, come up to speed so I know where to go.
Be glad, too.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Thank you, Mr. Root.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. I do want to thank Dan also. Dan has been attending the meetings on behalf of the county, and, um, we're, we're a very small fish in that pond, so...
I, I just have a question. Um, when you've, Dan, when you've actually said something, are you well-received, or, I mean, do they listen to what you have to say?
I would say...
Uh, yes, uh, it, it's a good group down there. Chairman's, um, right now, at least currently, is Richard Flora, and, uh, uh, they have asked questions, and, and, uh, it's very welcoming, and I, I didn't feel there was any controversy at all walking in there.
Good. I guess, I guess my feeling is it's very important to be involved in it. I think that on the intermodal issue, we might be like a lone wolf or a stepchild or something like that, but I think it, it, the potential there is really important for us to work together.
I agree.
And we've worked together on the regional jail with Roanoke County in particular, so I think it would probably be good.
Even though we're a small part, I know that there's been a lot of movement underway for us to connect up with Roanoke, not only in tourism, but in quite a few other ways, so I know they've been reaching out to us, and we have certainly, um, reciprocated, so it seems that there's a movement kind of in that direction, even though we're a very small part of that particular group.
Well, it is, but it, you know, it's, it's more than just focusing on that one little area.
Yes, I understand.
And it's more than focusing on that one issue.
Right.
And, uh, I think it's, I think it's something that's important for the area.
Yeah, I agree, I'd say.
I do, too.
You know, it's, it's a shame, Dan, that you can't be our representative.
I know.
I know, you're the, well, you know those people, and you were, certainly worked with a lot of them in your, your former life.
Uh, I did, I know, I know most of them on the board there, so, but it's not to be. I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Perkins.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right, the next item on our work session is the Montgomery County Tourism Development Council, and with a tourism plan update, Ms. Leatley.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Thank you for allowing me to come in and bring you up to speed on our progress so far. Got a brief PowerPoint here, just to try to keep me on track.
Uh-oh. Why are you calling? Why are you calling?
I promise, not death by PowerPoint tonight, but...
Thank you.
It's been about six months since I was here last, introduced myself, and I'm pleased to be here tonight to report some progress. Thanks to many folks in our community, and to Mr. Randall Rose from our State Tourism Office that's here with us tonight. Um, I'll be giving you a brief overview of our strategic plan, which carries us through the year of 2015. I'll be sharing that with you tonight. I look at this as more of a where do we begin kind of work plan for the tourism office. You should have two documents in your agenda packet. One is the working draft, and the other is, um, a highlight, uh, highlights of the tourism strategic plan. I encourage any questions either during the presentation or afterwards. I'd like to begin by providing a quick frame of reference for where our group started. One is, we know that Hokey Football, and Virginia Tech in particular, brings a lot of travelers to our area. Case in point, this weekend, I was in town, my family came in. I know the bed and breakfast I stay in was full, the hotels were full, we were down around the mall area, the restaurants were full, we went into downtown Blacksburg, and my son, who's a senior in high school, who'll be going to Radford this fall, was, his eyes got about this big round with all the activity down there, so we had a lot of visitors in our area. We may think about a couple that looks much like this after Hokey Football. These, uh, folks will be in town in force now that it's warm weather. We are also blessed with our, uh, rich natural resources, so we have a lot of outdoor enthusiasts that are already, uh, here. I've got a bike rack on the back of my VW and ready to haul my bike down to the Huckleberry Trail myself. Some of the markets that we may not think about as readily, but certainly they are here, and hopefully they'll be growing. Some of the pictures here illustrate business travelers, destination weddings and family reunions and those type, uh, that trend is here in the travel industry. Um, multi-generational travel, grandparents, their kids, and their kids' kids are traveling. What does that mean to us as a destination? The Christiansburg Aquatic Center, as well as many of our, um, wonderful facilities here, brings in group tours, uh, predominantly the youth, uh, sports. I know this summer, I think it's July, Christiansburg is hosting the U triple S.A., um, softball, so we'll have a lot of folks in town for that, and the Aquatic Center is just, does gangbusters. Medical travel, whether it's treatment or whether it's training, we know that's a part of our community. And meetings, hopefully in that bottom right, we don't have many of those that are that boring, but certainly meetings are, uh, a big part of travelers' reasons for coming here. I was just doing a site tour with the Holiday Inn University earlier this afternoon, and they have a group from Pizza Hut that is coming in, in May, the first week of May, and from multi, multiple states. So, there's people coming to our area, and we want to be positioned to help those folks out and help them want to come back. In the middle, there's an illustration of filming activities over in our neighboring Giles County. Um, they had a film production in, uh, not too long ago. I certainly see that we could entertain some of those opportunities as well, and while it's not your traditional visitation, these folks are in town with their production team and so forth for, for, for months, uh, sometimes, and also you get that marketing, um, opportunity outside of the actual activity itself. So, why tourism? One is, people come into our area, they spend money in shopping, dining, lodging, and that money goes immediately out into the economy and into our tax coffers. It contributes to a good quality of life. We, as residents, get to experience what we build for our travelers here. And then, lastly, it supports that economic, um, the traditional bricks and mortar economic development activity. I was talking with Jeff Hedge during, uh, one of our, uh, meetings, and he shared with me, I mean, it's because of the amenities that we have in this destination, the very amenities that attracts visitors are what attracted that, that company to come in here and, um, locating their east coast operations here, because what's good, what travelers like, what residents like, their employees are going to also enjoy. In Virginia, tourism is booming business. Here, we see some numbers, over twenty billion in revenue, two-hundred-and-seven thousand in jobs. Randy can answer some questions along those lines if you have more specifics there. What does that mean to Montgomery County? Well, travel expenditures in 2011 were in excess of one-hundred-and-twenty-one million. Local tax receipts, uh, a little better than two million, and job-wise, we saw over twelve-hundred jobs that's, that were here because of travel. And the way the money comes into our economy, travelers bring in that new money, it's injected into our economy, and it circulates through our modes of transportation, whether it be, you know, fuel or buses in, and then they've got to stay somewhere, they eat somewhere, they spend money, they, they are entertained, and that all circulates in our economy, making it very valuable to us. So, I would bring your attention to the top half of the overview, and just walk us through, December the eighteenth, we met with approximately sixty-five of folks, um, from our community that devoted a half a day to this first work session. And then, January the twenty-fourth, we reconvened, with some were repeat people who helped, and some were new into that process. So, for those first two days, we, we looked at things like, who are we? What do we have to promote? All those sorts of kind of superficial things that we all kind of know intuitively, but we wanted to get it out and discuss it. March the nineteenth, we reconvened, and we had our working draft, and we separated into smaller work groups in order to look at, um, you know, anything that we may have not added that needed to be there, or any revisions, just to kind of fine-tune that document. April the sixteenth, I presented the same presentation to Blacksburg Town Council on the morning of the sixteenth, and to Christiansburg Town Council that evening, and then today, I'm sharing that with you. May the seventeenth, we hope to have, um, uh, anticipated adoption of the plan by the operating board, and so that would give us enough time for you all to read over the plan and to get any kind of concerns or questions back to us, so we can make sure that they're addressed for that final adoption. And then, our targeted first phase of the marketing should be complete by September the first, and what that is, is if you, if you were to look further down into 2013, we've got a lot of the foundational building blocks that need to be put in place this year. It's pretty aggressive, but it, we need to have it done. The marketing plan, a website in place, a comprehensive visitor guide. We've got many good pieces now to share with travelers, but we need to have that good official traveler's guide, uh, visitor's guide to share. And then, there are some items over here in 2013 that we know is going to take a little more time, such as maybe a visitor's center. It may take some time. Not to say that that's going to be in place by the end of this year, but certainly we can have informational kiosk. I'm a big fan of taking the information to where the people are. So, there's events that are happening, uh, starting now and taking us all the way through the autumn, so we can be there with information. Certainly, people are mobile now, so we want to look into mobile applications and all those sorts of things that technology affords us. And then, in, um, 2014, we look a little further out into establishing, uh, programs such as our ambassador program, and what that is, is we realize that our first line, our front-line, um, employees, whether it be in hotels or restaurants or gas stations on the corner right off of eighty-one, we want to make sure that they know, if people say, "Where is it? What is it to do?", we want to make sure that they have that information, so, and also residents. I mean, our residents are our best form of advertising, friends and family, uh, you know, they are big cheerleaders of where they live, they can tell you where to go. Um, we want to make sure that the residents know exactly what we have to offer. And then, there's signage and weightfinding issues that we need to work through. We know that's going to take some time, but we want to get those all identified and get them on the table and start working through those channels. And then, in 2015, we hope that we are celebrating some successes, and we are looking forward to a revision, not, but, not a revision, but the next version of a strategic plan that would see us, uh, at 2016 and beyond. And then, lastly, towards the bottom of this overview, I mean, there's some things here that I listed that I thought that it was important for you to know, that, um, just because these are things that we've identified within the next three years, there's ongoing work now. I mean, the phone call, the phones are ringing, there's emails coming in, people saying, "I'm coming to your area, could you send me some information?" So, we're doing that now. There's work groups forming to address the, uh, the goals that are set forth in our plan. There's a marketing group, an infrastructure group, policy and outreach. And then, lastly, regional initiatives. There is a pack of, um, brochures that are before each one of you. I wanted to just highlight that we are involved in many regional initiatives, such as Fish Virginia First, uh, the Crooked Road, the Crooked Road Round the Mountain Artisan Trail, there's a whole host of them, and there'll probably be more. And why we do that is to, to extend our marketing dollars, for one, which is pretty important, and for two, we know that we need each other to partner, um, especially in southwest Virginia, uh, because budgets aren't what maybe northern Virginia and Hampton Roads may see, or, or other areas in other states that we compete with, so quite frankly, we need each other, so we, we like to stay active there. So, with that, I would like to raise Randy up, and just thank you all for hearing, hearing me tonight, and if you have any questions from anything that I've said so far, I would ask you to just direct those to myself or Randy.
Mr. Chairman, Board Supervisors, I just wanted to express thanks on behalf of the Virginia Tourism Corporation for partnering with us and allowing us to, uh, help facilitate the plan. We look forward to, uh, helping with the most important part, that's implementing in the coming years. Can't say enough about, uh, the county and all the representatives, over sixty people. It was a great turnout from private sector to several of you all. Mr. Meadows and the chairman, you were there, and we greatly appreciate that. Uh, and Lisa, from the day I met her until now, we've had consistent communication. I bet I could look through emails and, uh, count voicemails and know that we're in touch at least weekly, or pretty close to weekly, so, uh, you know, uh, that you have a mover and shaker there, and we greatly appreciate the work that she's doing with us. We look forward to working with you.
Is there any questions or comments from the board on?
Yeah, comment. Uh, I would just like to, uh, commend Lisa on the work that, that she's done. I mean, to me, I always go out of this building, I'm over here a number of times through the week, uh, you know, sometimes four times a, a week at evening meetings, and see her in there working and, and at eight-thirty, nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night. I just tell her, I'm just glad Montgomery County is only three-hundred-and-ninety-three miles, square miles, instead of a thousand square miles, because she never would get home. Yeah, but, uh, she, when she came, she, she hit the ground running when she came here, and, uh, all I can do is commend her, you know?
Well, thank you, and I can tell you, I am working on a volunteer and intern program as well. Stay here, you.
Well, and I, I, if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add thanks, not only to Lisa, but to Randy as well. Randy came down and facilitated the two, um, sessions that we had and did an excellent job, and, um, even before Lisa was on board, we had a lot of communication going back and forth, and has been a big supporter of what we're trying to do here, so I'm, I'm very confident that things are going to continue to go onward and upward under Lisa's leadership and with the support of ETC. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Lisa, sorry, I actually had a question. Sorry. Uh, this is just kind of a general thing, is that I was, I, I looked very briefly through the plan, so it's probably here, and I just missed it, but I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about kind of your, your plans or your thoughts about kind of social media outreach and things like that? If that's, if that's a component here, I mean, scanning, again, just scanning very quickly, it seemed very kind of, if you will, traditional marketing-based kind of paper and, and things like that.
It's absolutely a part of it, and I didn't get too deep into that myself. There would be a marketing work group that would be in place. Currently, there is a MCBA, Lisa, kind of unofficial Twitter, um, Twitter page there, and we hope to have a fan page built for, uh, Facebook, and I can do that. I didn't want to get too deep into the social media aspect before we had a marketing plan in place and some other pieces that needed to be put there, because branding is still going to be a large part of what we're going to do. It did not come out in the strategic plan, that'll, this is a very foundational piece that just gives direction, and, um, I hope to, I'm working on a request for proposal now for a branding consultant to help, you know, brand ourselves and come up with all those design elements, and, um, and then it's my hope that it would be a comprehensive, you know, integrated social media plan that would come out of the greater marketing plan. Didn't want to get too ahead of myself with that and have to backtrack, and, but I did want to have that voice in the community and that, um, not voice, but the, um, the conduit there, so people, you know, we can, we can keep people apprised of what's going on, as well as people speaking back into the process, and we've done that through Twitter so far.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'd just like to thank Lisa and Randy for all their work, and I've really enjoyed working with you both throughout this process, so we'll just keep on going, okay? Uh, the next item is the, uh, school board request, and I guess we'll, I'd just start that off, Mr. Meadows?
Sure. Um, we received a letter last week. Supervisor Biggs had alluded to it in her report from the school board meeting, uh, from last week, uh, that she emailed the board, and, uh, the letter was received, uh, I guess the end of last week, from, uh, the superintendent, uh, requesting, uh, five-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, uh, for one-time funds, uh, to be used for buses, technology and roofs. Uh, that letter is in your packet, is, uh, tab D, and, um, after sending that out to the board last week, several of you indicated that you'd like to have it on the agenda for discussion this evening, so we added it to work session, and, um, I'd be glad to answer what I know. The letter's pretty, I think, self-explanatory, but I know the, the board, several board members indicated they wanted some discussion, so that's the introduction.
All right. And who wants to start with the discussion?
Well, I'll just say that, you know, I, I did attend the school board meeting when this, um, discussion came up, and basically, the idea was that these items were capital items, and, you know, there's been some talk about how the school board doesn't have a capital budget, they just have an operating budget and that kind of thing going on, but, um, so, anyway, after much discussion, uh, they arrived at consensus to ask if we could could fund these out of one-time monies, uh, and includes, you know, of course, the funds for building, repair, roof maintenance plan, which we all know is critical for roofs in any building. But, um, and then there, that was their two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost. And then there was a hundred and fifty thousand put aside for, uh, the Twenty First Century Classroom Improvement Set for Technology money there. And then the hundred and seventy-five thousand, uh, was for the bus replacement of two buses. Now, these had been, I, I think I sent you the link to show you Ms. Blackburn's, um, proposal to cut the one point four million plus out of the budget. And that was the link I sent you in the email. And if you, if you go directly to that email, you can see where this capital cost would reside in lines fourteen, fifteen and sixteen in her proposal there. So I don't know if I can help you in the other way, but that's basically how that got, um, from their meeting back to our board.
Can I ask a question of clarification? Um, at what year of the building repair, the roofing repair maintenance, um, line item, it says it's part of this fi- five-year plan. What year within that five-year plan are we right now? Or is this school board, I should say, sorry?
Do we know that?
I don't know. I don't know that, I know the answer.
Does the chair know that out there?
Oh, year two?
Year two. I remember from last year, but I didn't know if there was a year before I was on the board.
I remember as long as I've been on the board, we've had in the plan.
Yeah, we got the roof repair put in, I think after I got on the board, because that's when the roofs were falling apart and water was coming into the schools.
What roofs are there for?
Do we know? I don't know. They didn't mention specific roofs. I don't, I don't know if they have a plan.
That would seem to be what you should have did though.
The, the letter does indicate they have a five-year roofing plan, uh, that's been approved by the school board. I, I don't know which particular roof that is, but...
Mary, in attending the meeting, it, it sounds like this is not a critical issue for them, the roof replacements, because it wasn't a priority in their budget. And so, these are the, the bottom end of things as far as their priorities. Is that correct?
Well, in the original budget, um, I guess they had this in there, because this is a, this is a reoccurring thing. They have two hundred and fifty thousand for this year listed on that sheet, if you look back on that sheet.
Right, but it's a reoccurring issue, but this is one of those issues that they didn't deem as a critical. This is an area that they felt like they could make a cut in.
No, they're hoping because it's a capital issue, they could move in and ask for a one-time fund rather than it being a recurring fund, since there's a set.
See, like the list listed here.
Right, but if it's a reoccurring, then it's not that one-time money.
Well, reoccurring just means that you need to have money in for roof repair each, you know, each year. Or you can just wait till it falls in like we did at Blacksburg, it's no problem.
No, no, wait, I, I, I just point out the fact, we didn't wait for that. The school board gets to decide and, and how they spend their money. And if they decide that the roof replacement is not a priority, then it's not a priority for them and that there's some other priorities in their budget that are more important than these issues. These are the issues that were going to be cut. They presented them to us to be cut, as I understand it, so...
No, they didn't. I think you're mistaken there.
Okay, so...
They haven't, they haven't decided on anything yet. This is a request so that they could potentially take this out of their budget, since we have capital. We have, what, seven million, seven plus million dollars in reserve right now, plus seven hundred thousand dollars coming in for this coming year in current reserves, so that we could possibly fund this out of another pot, so that they wouldn't have to lay off teachers and janitors and things like that, potentially with the coming year, since they're still down with the funding for the coming year.
If I, and, and I'm just going through the numbers that, that we were initially given. They started off asking for four point two million. The initial plan, when they passed the, um, the, the, the block scheduling, was that they were going to save one point two million. They have gotten seven hundred thousand dollars if they decide, in, in federal and state monies, if they decide to give the teachers raises. Uh, this board voted to give them two point three million dollars. That meets their obligations under their four point two million dollar budget requests. I'm just wondering with their numbers, what they went through doing math at four point two million, one point two million in savings is, is down to three hun- uh, three million dollars, seven hundred thousand dollars in state and, and federal monies that have come in, and then two point three million dollars and a little bit more than two point three million dollars in what this board voted to give them. So that adds up to four point two million.
No, I think your math is a little off. Is that we appropriated an extra two point three, it says written in the, the letter, is that we appropriated an extra two point three. They were down four point, four point two million dollars. All right, we appropriated four point three, sorry. Uh, we appropriated two point three million dollars, they got about seven hundred thousand dollars from the state, and so they're still down one point four, one million, four hundred ninety thousand dollars and what, sorry, one hundred twenty-seven dollars.
Right, but if their numbers aren't matching up to what they initially gave us, which was four point two, I mean, one point two in savings for the block schedule gets us to three. Seven hundred thousand dollars gets us to where, where the new state and federal dollars come from. That's two point three. We gave them two point three. I mean, that's what was voted on.
I mean, it's two point, yeah, two point two.
No, no, it was going to be two point two, but Matt had an addendum to add a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, that gets us up to two point three. That adds up to over four point two, which was their original request on a needs-based budget that was made back there. And that, that's just my point. And, and I, I won't say anything else, but the, that, the math works, four point two million.
Mr. President? Go on.
Tell, I don't understand, Mary, tell me what you're talking about.
Go ahead, Ms. Perkins.
I was going to say, um, when the superintendent was speaking to us at some of the community events and, and where, her sense is that they're one point four million dollars short in their budget, even with, with everything we've given them, they were one point four million dollars short in the budget.
But her budget didn't include the one point two million dollars in savings from doing the block scheduling. That was one point two million dollars that they listed that they were going to be able to save. I've said it a couple of meetings, they made some tough decisions in, in, in going forward with that. That's a tough decision that they made. But they made it, that's one point two million dollars in savings.
I don't know whether she included that.
Yeah, it's right here on the second page, it's like the one point...
I know, but I'm just saying in addition.
Right here.
Right, but it, 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 according to modified method of school, uh, they've got it at one point one nine, one million dollars. Um, but they're, they're, I'm just saying, if you do the math from what they've told us and what they're saying, that adds up to actually a little bit over the four point two million dollars that they said they needed in tax increases. That's, that's just the numbers.
Well, you know, and I still would like, I don't understand any, I just find a school board asking for any amount of money from anybody unless they're going to say what exactly, what building it goes on, if it's a roof, where it's going, you know, if it's a bus, uh, where the bus is going, is it, where the bus is going to be, or two buses or three, but where they allocate it to. I think that we have that right to know, what, and the citizens of this county have the right to know where their money's being spent and how it's being spent. We can't take just something that says we need this, this, this and this for someplace in the universe and just keep throwing it out there without knowing where we're spending the money. Where, it's just wrong, because that's our responsibility.
It's actually the school board's responsibility, since they're an elected board, but discretionary...
No, it's not the school board's responsibility, because it's our responsibility to make...
You can keep saying it's not, but it is. I mean, you know, we keep...
We're responsible for every penny that we get in here.
Yes, we are, and so is the school board that we allocate to them.
Every spending or giving away, then that's our responsibility. Whether we spend it, give it away, or, or give it to someone to build something.
Mr. Creed, that you've been on this board longer than I have, and so you know well that we allocate to the school board based upon different divisions, different separations for maintenance or for operations, for example. And within that, the school board has a decision on how to spend that money.
They have what?
They have, they have discretion on how to spend that money, because they're an elected board that represents the citizens and they are indeed accountable to the citizens for how they spend that money. Now, we can argue whether we want to allocate it for maintenance, for example, and I, I think that, that is a very good discussion that we need to have, but we don't need to micromanage the school board. We, we don't, we don't have the authority. You want to know what it means?
I want to know where the money's going to. And I have been involved...
Mr. Jones would like to come forward and make a statement if he may.
Well, when I get through, he can come. I have been involved with giving out money that was said, just like this thing that we have here of how much money they need, and none of it go to where they said it was going, none of it. Well, I take that back. One and a half million dollars, three hundred and some few thousand dollars went to what they said it was going to. Now...
So if that's the case, then somebody should be in jail, right?
They should be, absolutely. Somebody should have got fired for it.
Okay, all right.
They didn't have it.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Um, Mr. Creed, to answer your question, roof replacements will go to Margaret Beeks Elementary School, Christiansburg Elementary School and Shawville Elementary School. That is item twenty on our capital improvement list. And that's where we would look down to that capital improvement list and spend those funds. Buses, uh, we have a hundred and thirty-some odd buses in the fleet. We have about fifteen of those buses that are either out of service or, bear with me just a second, if I can get to my bus list spreadsheet here. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven buses that are out of service. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Fifteen, around fifteen buses that are, exceed twelve years, and that is the maximum limit that you like on your buses. So we're asking to replace twelve of about fifteen buses that are in the age of twelve years or older. Each of those buses have well over a hundred thousand miles on them. And then the technology money that we've asked, and that's, we really, the initial budget was for four, that was reduced down to two. And then as far as the technology replacement, uh, I do not have the information for the schools that that technology money would go to, but we can certainly get that to.
What was that that was four and reduced to two?
Yes. The initial, the initial budget that we presented for had capital money in it for four bus replacements. And then in the budget that she presented, her recommendations, after she got the information on your approved budget, she reduced it down to two. She replaced two buses.
Two buses on, in this thing?
Yeah, that's the cost for two buses. Yes. And I'm going by the capital improvement budget list. Here's what I'm going on, and it has fifty different items on it.
Why, uh, Mr. Chair from school board, uh, what are the plans for school security? I mean, I'm sure that the schools are going to do something through the summer to address the security problems at about, what, four, fifteen, sixteen schools throughout the county?
Yes, sir. Um, right now, what the superintendent is doing is getting the assessments from the three police chiefs. Uh, she has met with the sheriff, she has met with the two town police chiefs, and she's also met, uh, I think with the Virginia Tech, uh, police chief as well. And what they're doing is providing her with security assessments of each of the facilities that they have jurisdiction over. And at that point, we'll take a look at those recommendations and put together a list. And of course, that's going to take some capital funding. To put a security system in, a scan system in, right now is about twenty grand per school. If you want a card swipe system that puts the visitor kind of in a holding tank until they're buzzed in, uh, you're looking at retrofitting the, the schools at about twenty grand. And because of the popularity right now, we would be on waiting list. But that's not something that would happen quickly. Uh, there's some money out there that we're looking at, uh, some grants and things of that nature, but she's still, right now, she hasn't presented it to the board because she's still collecting data. They are putting a, a matrix summary together from all the reports, and from that matrix summary, she's going to put together a priority list of what needs to occur.
What I also heard from somewhere is that the, in the state budget, the governor's budget is supposed to be one hundred thousand dollars set aside for each school division, I guess, across the Commonwealth, that, I guess the divisions have to apply for it as a part of the security plan?
Right, I think that's one of the grants that she's looking at, has to apply.
Okay. And roughly to address our schools and everything, we're looking at about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars to...
Close to three hundred twenty, close to three hundred grand.
So I would imagine that the school board would be coming back to us or the superintendent for some more money to do school security?
That is potentially laying out there, that's correct, Mr. Creed. And as you well know, it's, it's came even more by, uh, urgency over the recent events here.
I mean, you know, and, and, and believe me not, I, I really believe in, in the security system. I'd rather see a, a secure school with a leaky roof than, uh, a repaired roof in an unsecured school. So, you know, that's, we have sort of, sort of looking at it, uh, that, uh, and when I, when I read this letter, you know, it says that the school board must still reduce their approved budget by one point four million dollars. I said, and then it stopped right there. Well, I said, I hope they don't want the board to fill that hole. You know, and then I read it further and found out it was, you know, about a half a million dollars.
I, I have a question, but at the same time, I understand you probably may have not come here tonight to ask, uh, I'll, I'll answer a lot of questions, and if you want to pass, I understand. Um, and one, in regard to the security, I know that in Nero's Elementary and Middle School, that they were able to install security cameras, using Wi-Fi, not utilizing having the wires, but kind of thinking outside the box, they were able to do that for about ten thousand dollars, at least. That's what Principal Franklin was able to tell me when I was over visiting at that school. That's something, and, and they used a company out of Roanoke to be able to do that. Now, that still has a buzzer to let you in the door, has camera at, at two of the doors that are open, are subject to buzzers, including monitoring system and the cameras. And so that, but that was installed by school board staff over there, um, and, and to go around, that was ten thousand dollars instead of, uh, in just an idea to, to talk about and didn't know that, that's something there. Also, are there still the two part-time security at the Blacksburg Middle School Christiansburg campus? Is that...
There is, and those will wait when we move back.
And that, was there, and, and again, I know you're not here speaking on behalf of all of you, or whole board, and you kind of in a calm spot, was there ever any discussions about moving maybe one of those security guards over to the following branch because of the issues involved on the parking lot?
There has not been any discussion at this point on that.
But ain't, ain't one of them from Christiansburg and one from Blacksburg? The two security over there?
I, I can't answer that.
No, no, I, no, there's a, there's a school resource officer, and then in addition to the school resource officer at the Blacksburg Middle School Christiansburg campus, there's two private security guards.
I didn't know that.
That, uh, I think in the budget were about seventeen thousand dollars a year. They're not full-time positions, they are part-time positions, but they're two. And I was just wondering if there was any discussion about maybe moving one of those over to the, the following branch to address some of the concerns that have been expressed with, with the students and parents over there?
Not at this time, no.
Has there been a lot of unwanted visitors at the Blacksburg Middle School Christiansburg campus that you, to...
Uh, I would hope not. I would hope that the security be put in place with those two people present and with the SRA present, that would be a visible sign not to visit the campus. That's what they're there for, is to deter that kind of activity. So to me, I think that that's working.
And wasn't it also like when the kids were changing out of the, um, mobile classrooms into the school or something?
Yeah.
Or they sort of needed somebody there?
They were crossing a road...
Yeah.
That goes to the back of the school where there's deliveries. And, uh, there was some other type of activities, you know, there's constant travel back and forth, so there were more aides to make sure that the kids crossed there safely. And there's quite a number of kids, the entire eighth grade wing is basically out in the mobile trailers. So that's the reason of it. I don't, the other question I need to find out is if they both are there at the same time?
Well, I didn't, I wasn't, I know that there's two part-time...
Two there, but I'm not sure they both are there at the same time. They could be working differently. Two there, but I'm not sure they both are there at the same time. They could be working different schedules. That's a good question.
Anybody else?
And I would say, just, just, I want to make sure you're aware, it's a request, and it's a request that was based on the, the funding from last year from the one-time June collection that we were approached above, and what we wanted to do this year was to be proactive and come before the board and let you know that we have other requests. Because, as you know, we personally, I believe that our capital should be a separate discussion as opposed to operation, and that I think that would benefit not only our board, but your board, and I think the citizens overall long-term, if we can get to that discussion in which we're looking at two separate types of budgets. But I thank you for listening to the request quickly, and I look forward to being able to answer any questions you have. If you've got more for Craig or me, we'll get you the answers. Thank you.
No, I just, this is a subject I hope we'll be bringing up during our joint meeting with the school board. And I think this is one of, gonna be one of our primary efforts to get through this year to try and divide capital from operations. We talked about it last time we had a meeting, and we haven't gone very far. But I think right now it's time to pursue that, and, uh...
I agree. I know the school board's been working to update their capital plan, and the superintendent and I have had several conversations about once they feel comfortable with their piece, bringing that over and integrating it into the county's piece so we can begin our discussions.
So, do you see this as the beginning of that joint, the, the letter that, that she has, um, sent to us? That this is what we're attempting to do, is to try to separate out these two?
Well, let's go back to what Mr. Creed said a couple minutes ago. All money is taxpayers' money. Okay? My personal feeling and all, just, I'm bringing it out, is I feel, and I talked to Mr. Jones about this several times in our meetings, that, uh, the schools should be responsible for education. Okay? And capital is for all county. Be it school capital, be it sheriff's capital, be it, it all comes out of the same pocket. Personally, I'd hope to go in that direction and separate the two of what is education and operations, and what is capital, and how should it be handled? Okay?
Don't we have some definitions of what we consider don't wait to be capital?
Well, we, I think we have some. I don't think they're in stone. Capital is an X amount of dollars in a period of time.
But it's intertwined with education. I mean, if you're looking at, if you're looking at technology...
Is the building maintenance item an education item, or is that an engineering item?
No, I'm saying technology.
Technology is part of education.
Okay, so, but these are oftentimes, um, one-time issues, but there are also recurring issues in the budget. Um, if you're gonna consider that just strictly capital, or are you gonna consider it education? Or are you gonna consider it both?
These are the things that I can't decide by myself.
Well, you're gonna have to, I mean, somebody's got to.
We need to have the conversation.
If you want to talk about a capital budget and a...
But we need to have the conversation.
Education.
And we need to get both boards in agreement on it. You know, I mean, no one person is gonna be able to decide that.
I think when we look back in our past is that the board allocated money to the, to the school board, and they built schools and stuff. They built the school, but they didn't put any money aside to do any kind of maintenance on that school or, or any, and they expected, I guess, the school board had an operational budget to do whatever little maintenance that had to be on the school that would come out of it. I believe if we don't, uh, do some preventative maintenance like roof repairs and whatever need to be done, the same thing's gonna happen, it's gonna recur to, that, that happened over at Blacksburg Gymnasium.
Exactly. You're right.
And it's a lot of taxpayer money that's been invested in these structures and things, and if we don't do what we need to do to sort of, uh, keep them up and maintain them, they're gonna fall down quite often. I think Jack is here tonight, and Jack is always, and I listen to Jack. People don't think I listen to Jack. I think we all listen to Jack. But Jack has always thought, talked about a capital budget for schools versus an operational budget. He said, "When is schools gonna get a, a capital budget?", you know, and things like that. Uh, and so, I guess the makeup of this board and what we've experienced with the gymnasium falling down, et cetera, et cetera, we want to be a forward-thinking and a proactive board instead of a reactive board. I mean, if one of the elementary schools proves cave-in or whatever, what are we gonna do? Run out and borrow some money and build another school? Or are we gonna try to take care of what we have and make it last as long as we can make it last?
How much is the, um, the whole school, or the number of schools we have? What is that in terms of value? What have we said?
I don't have that. It's...
You know, how much taxpayer money?
Several hundred million dollars.
What?
Several hundred million dollars.
That's what I understood. It was several hundred million dollars, and we've gotta do something to make certain that we keep that going so that...
I think we need to keep those going, and we need to keep the county going. Buildings, we have structures here too, you know? And my personal opinion is that should be the responsibility of the county, not necessarily, "School board does these buildings, sheriff does these buildings", because it's all the same taxpayer's money.
Well, they all mostly belong to the county now. It used to be that those schools belonged to the schools.
They, they still belong to the schools.
Some of them still do.
Some of them don't. No, they really belong to the county in terms of land and that sort of thing.
They, they belong to the schools, but...
But they belong to the county.
But they really belong to the citizens that has paid for them. And the dollars from them are supposed to come back to the citizens. It's not, we, we as a board decided that we would give that money to the school board. But that's just because we voted on doing that, and that's, and as far as I'm concerned, that's fine and wonderful. But it's not theirs because the, it, it just don't belong to them other than the fact that this board decided that would be a good way for them to have some extra money for whatever their purpose was as far as building and, and keeping things up.
Yeah, but what about debt service?
What about what?
What about, what about debt service? Is it all in the county, or is it part of the county?
Well, it, it totally is when you look at it. I mean, you can call it school board money, but it's still the same taxpayer pays for everything.
Is it now?
The same taxpayer pays for everything. It is perceived as two different items, but in actuality it's one.
Is debt service for schools in the school budget, or is it in the...
I don't think it's in the school budget. It's under the county.
It's all under the county? They don't have to take any of the money that we give them and put it into debt service?
That's correct.
Okay.
They don't, they don't have any money to put into debt service.
That's our, that's...
It's ours, right. It's our responsibility.
Let, let me interject this. If I'm a citizen living over in this neighborhood, when I look at PSA, when I look at schools, when I look at Montgomery County, you all are county employees. I don't separate you that that school, that's PSA. You represent Montgomery County, and when they pay their taxes, so to speak, and you often, your people says, "Well, here goes my eight hundred dollars to the county." They didn't say, "So much went to the schools, and so much went to this place. It goes to the county." And I think you have to look from a citizen's perspective. It's that some citizens don't realize this. Like, I remember talking to some, some people about a school, and they says, "Well, we've paid enough taxes ourselves that y'all ought to just, the county ought to just give us that school." And when I explained to them, I says, "That school right there belongs to every citizen in Montgomery County." You have to, you may not know it, but you helped pay for the school down in eastern Montgomery. "I am?" "Well, that's right." Then when the tax dollars go in. So, whether it's schools or whether it's, it's county, it's all the citizen stuff. And I said, "You can argue this way and argue that, and, and you won't get anywhere." It's the thing about it is that we need to address what we have in front of us and, and move on.
But what do we, we want to just separate it out, is what we're saying.
That, that's what I, I would like to see.
Well, if we do that and we separate it out to a maintenance budget, which is more of a capital budget, then we can address that, we can look at how much they're currently spending, then put that into a maintenance side of the school board, uh, if that's something that... But I don't know that tonight's a night that's...
This is what we have to do with, with the joint meeting.
Right.
Because we've got two sets of elected officials that need to agree.
And I think it will take a whole year about looking at what we've given, what they've given, how we separate it out, and what we put into what, and what we, what we say goes here, and what says goes there, and we have to depend on our, um, on Carol and Craig and, and the school administrators to come together to try to...
Pull that together.
Get through that along with you as chair of the board and Wendell as chair of the school board, so...
Wendell, I want to thank you for your comments tonight. Motion for other work session. Do we have a second? Second. Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Parkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Kup?
Aye.
Chair of the list?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, as a result of the work session, we need to, why don't we do the one we just now got finished with?
I, I wouldn't have a problem moving to table this until we can get an idea of what other needs are from that one-time money and other suggestions that the county administration has. Take a look at it, um, evaluate their requests along with everyone else's requests for that one-time money use, and so I will make that motion.
I'll second that. Moving to second and any discussion?
So, what, what's the motion, what's the motion?
To table the school board's request. Until we can hear from the county administration as to any other needs that we may need to address with that money. If it turns out that we don't have any other needs, we've got that money. Some of us may want to put it away, put it in part of that one point four million dollar pot for future capital. Some of us may want to go ahead and allocate the full seven hundred thousand dollars for the school board. If that's, but at least that we can make an informed decision after we have the county talk about what other uses might be out there for the seven hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna get from the one-time monies. So, at, I'm moving to table the, the, the school board's request until a, a later meeting, until Craig can get in Carol or, or whatever staff Craig deems appropriate to give us some information.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, since there's not technically an agenda making the request, I think the motion should be, my vote is to amend the motion, say, say, table, to be delaying.
Delaying any action until, I, I, I'll accept that. I guess it can't be a friendly amendment from you, but I would, uh, accept that.
Okay. How long would it take for this information to come back to this board that, for them to get to, to get together? What I'm saying is that I think we're in evil right now, and I don't know when they negotiate, uh, I mean, whether we do it or whether we don't. Whether it has some negotiating, uh, concerns with teach, with staff and so forth as far as contracts and so forth like it, so if we delay it too long...
I'd say we could, I, I would say, I'd ask Craig, could we take it up in the first, uh...
What kind of time table do we have, Wendell?
Um, as far as teacher contracts, it shouldn't have any impact.
No impact.
But it's the, the reason we're trying to do with the capital part of it now is because if you're gonna be ordering buses, and you're gonna be ordering supplies and materials, you want to get that order placed in our case, and we, uh, in places to maintain.
You want to get those roofs and things?
I'd like to move on the roofs at least.
We'll move efficiently, so that we can get the buses, or we can get that here. We have a significant downtime, but we have downtime on all the other equipment. The time we're fixing up on other downtime expenses on materials, materials off the beginning of the house, and so is the downtime on materials.
But can I ask a question? Y'all been on the board long, and I have. It's my understanding typically the rollover money, and we'll, we'll, that, I guess we'll have a better idea when that money comes in. Isn't it typically used for the maintenance and repairs and the roofs in the past?
It has been, yes.
Oh, I, maybe somebody ought to ask Mr. Jones what the anticipated rollover money from the school board budget will be this year, because they discussed that too.
Some of it, some of it, no.
It's not a happy situation.
No, I'm sure it's not.
Carryover money will be very little this year. Fifty, fifty thousand, something of that nature. Um, just like we have tried to change the thinking, uh, based on my experience on the board of using, um, school operating money as a savings account to do maintenance, I think is bad business. Uh, you're giving us an operating budget. We should spend that operating budget for what we said we were gonna spend it for, and not hold back and not spend things on what we say we weren't gonna spend it for. Uh, that's, that's my approach, and that's me speaking as one individual from the board. Uh, and our superintendent has indicated that it's gonna be a very small carryover. In the past, we have used that carryover to do some, uh, very small capital maintenance items, and usually we send that request over to the board. I think that she has some, uh, uh, one small request that she'll probably bring forward. We won't know what that money is until, you know, later in May and early in June, what the potential carryover's gonna be, but it's a very small amount.
And this is more reason we need to have a capital account?
Yeah, certainly. So, what are we doing?
I, I don't really understand how you, how you have a budget and you pass it. And then you find out there are not just one time that some, that the people you're responsible for giving money, not just one time that they're gonna ask for more money, but it seems to be that's gonna, you have one, and then next month you have another one, and after that there's probably another one. And, you know, I just, when does it stop if, if you've got your operating money for the year, but you stick getting more every month or two? I don't, I don't understand that. Also, I don't understand if you have too many teachers and you worry you're gonna have to lay them off. Why did we send basically all of the principals and, and other folks up to a high?
I'm not sure that's really relevant at this point.
But it is, it is. You have money to send them up there for four or five days, and probably stay up there? It seems to me like that's wrong.
We go up to the Greenbrier every year.
What, uh, wait a minute, I've not been to the Greenbrier.
Well, some of us went up to the Greenbrier.
What, what we got before us right now?
And let me ask, Wendy, are we just delaying this, or are we...
The motion that was, that's been seconded is to delay taking any action.
Okay, so we need to have a roll call?
No.
Okay, well, I just have a question about getting the information from the county. So, that means what we're basically doing is we're telling Mr. Meadows to come up with a list of all the projects that need one-time money. Is that what we're saying? That are capital in the county. Don't we already have a list of capital projects in the county?
Yes.
And isn't it in the millions and millions of dollars?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so what are we really talking about?
So, we're talking about spending part of that seven hundred thousand dollars to make and take care of the part of those millions and millions of dollars.
Okay, so in other words, we're talking about, I want to get this straight in my head, what you're trying to say. You want a list of all the county projects so you can put it against the school projects, and then we'll decide how to spend seven hundred thousand dollars. And I just want to bring to everyone's attention, there is more than seven hundred thousand dollars in one-time money that can be spent, and that's all I'm gonna say.
It's three point two million.
Those are some of the reserves such as for...
No, that's after reserves, and that's after all the other money. I just had to...
Can I call a question?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Parkins?
No.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
No.
Mr. Kup?
Yes.
Mr. Gabriel?
No.
Mr. Creed?
Yes.
Chair of the list?
Yes.
Who'd I forget?
Four and three.
Okay.
Four no, four noes, four noes, three yeses.
Four nos and three yeses.
Yes.
Well, I like to make a motion to, um, to allocate the five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the needs that were brought to us, and that would come out of, um, one-time monies.
Second?
Just second?
Second, who did it? Mr. Gabriel?
I, I seconded.
Thank you.
Any, for, I, I have to discuss, I know some of those things that we've already talked about, but I would just be...
I, I thought that's what we just kind of went through, and... I thought that's who we just kind of went through, and, you know, if you were, I usually make a statement last, so-
Call the question.
May I make a statement?
I thought you did.
I'm not sure we're ready.
I think we had a discussion.
In the work session?
No, we're out, we're out of work session.
Did we not vote to table it a minute ago?
No, we failed, defeated.
Okay.
And so, Mary-
Bringing the motion back.
-to put $575,000 sent to the school board, uh, at, at this point in time.
No, not 700, 575, $575,000 as they indicated what it would be spent on.
I don't think that we can micromanage it that way. But can we, can we tell them exactly how they're going to spend it?
They already told us.
They told us what they were going to do.
I know, but I don't know, I don't understand, they told us all over.
All right.
I call the question.
This is getting a little bit confusing to me here.
He's going to make his statement.
But, uh-
You can't do anything after I call the question.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Creed?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Well, I'm going to say no, but I want to qualify it. I know we will have time to look at this, it isn't something I felt we needed to do tonight, it wasn't on the agenda for tonight, so, for that matter, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, four ayes, three noes.
Yeah. Next item on the agenda is county attorney's report.
Well, do we want, I'm sorry, can we go back? I know when we came out of work session, there was some discussion about-
Oh, yeah, we need to-
An appointment for the-
Appointment for the MPO.
Going to make a motion to appoint Annette Perkins to the Roanoke County MPO Board with, um, who's going to be the alternate? Uh, Mr. Plitus has the alternate.
Second.
Then moving and seconded, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Willis?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. Next item is county administrator's report.
Yes, sir, just two items briefly. Um, I'll be getting an email to the board members tomorrow regarding, um, some upcoming tours for the new Auburn High School and the new Blacksburg High School. Um, the dates are tentatively scheduled for one day next week at 5:00 and the following week at 5:00, and what we'll try to do is just ask you to let us know what days work best for you, and then we'll set it up so that we don't have multiple conflicts, but I'll send that out in an email to you tomorrow so you can see the dates.
Are you going to do one of those, uh, group, whatever it is?
Oh, yeah.
Doodle balls?
Yeah.
I don't know. Those work well, except when you try to figure them out sometimes. But, yes, we'll get that information out to you.
Just make sure it's good weather and not raining, I don't want any snow like we had last time.
Well, I-
Or the wind.
Well, we may be out of luck, but we'll do the best we can. Also, you'll be getting an invitation, keep your eye out for an invitation from Ms. Winnie for, uh, joining a new group for your Dropbox account. We are upgrading Dropbox to give us additional storage capacity, and that's going to require setting up, uh, if you will, a new group, and I think you'll have to be invited to join the group, so be on the lookout for that email so you can respond that you're joining the group. That will allow us to keep older agendas and some things in archives, so, so we'll be letting you know about that. Last thing I wanted to mention is in light of, uh, some continued concerns locally and nationally regarding security, uh, we are doing several things, uh, with regard to security in all our county buildings, um, some of which I can tell you, some of which I'm not going to tell you, but-
Good.
Uh, we are looking at some things, and, uh, we continue to review, uh, how to make all our facilities safe, and I certainly appreciate any comments when you have them about any concerns you have.
May I ask a question? Are we considering putting, um, metal detectors downstairs?
We have not considered that yet, simply because of the number of citizens that come in and out of this building during the day to make payments and to visit the commissioner's office, it would, it would be extremely expensive and extremely inconvenient for folks if we do that.
What about up here?
Have not talked about that yet.
It would mean that if anybody came through, goes down with a pocket knife, somebody had to be there to-
I'm just asking, have they talked about it? Have they talked about it or considered it?
We, it's definitely been a, it definitely came up in a discussion, but, um, my, I have two concerns, I mean, um, one is the cost, the other is it would be extremely inconvenient, but I know, I know-
I would say that when I went to Chesapeake to take care of my aunt's estate, this was ten, no, this was 12 years ago, 13 years ago, their government building and part of their clerk's, you know, the clerk's office, a lot of other things were all together, and they actually had police at the doors with, um, the same kind of activity that we had before going in the courthouse, for their, all of their government buildings, and that was about 12, 13 years ago, that's why I asked if you considered any of that. I never thought Montgomery County needed that, but, you know, one never knows, so I just wondered, that's all I was asking.
Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't suggesting you do it, I was just asking.
Well, it is, it is certainly something that has been discussed, but there, there are a lot of reasons at this point I would be concerned about moving to that step, but and Mr. Vice Chair, that's all I have.
Mr. Creed? Supervisor Burke?
Well, I will go to the MPO and do the best I can, but again, I do want to schedule a time to talk with you and talk with Mr. Brew to be sure that I understand where we're going from with that, um, and, um, we'll see, and I'll come back with a report for all of you.
I guess it's Mr. Burke, okay. You know, it was, it was pretty nice to see in the NACO newsletter, and it says counties honored for their transparency on the web, and then when you look at 38 counties and boroughs and perches received scores of A-plus, and Montgomery County, Virginia is on this, this, uh, long list, you talk about Anchorage, Alaska, and several communities in Colorado and, and things like that, and it was, uh, one, two, three, probably about six communities across the continent of Virginia, and these are like Washington County, Prince, uh, George's County, Montgomery County Matthews, Gloucester, Chesapeake, and Arlington, so, in reading this and you look and says, wow, Montgomery County and, and the transparency, you know, on the web, I thought that was, uh, pretty special, because sometimes, I think I read an article or, or some editorial, um, in one of the papers talking about we wasn't transparent enough that we may have got a, a, a B-plus or, or C or something like this, but when you have a national organization recognize you, I think that's pretty special.
Was that Montgomery County, Virginia?
That's Montgomery County.
Right.
Thank you.
I made you agree, anyway. Montgomery County boroughs, somewhere like that, but it's Montgomery County.
And, and if I can just add to Supervisor Brown's comments, Ruth Ritchie, who's, who's out of town with a family matter, uh, has done a tremendous amount of work to ensure that we get that A-plus rating, as a matter of fact, we did have a lower rating last year, and we made a point to determine what the issues were that kept us from getting the A, and we've addressed those, so, uh, kudos to Ruth and, and her folks for making sure that we took care of those. Thank you.
That's all I have, uh, I guess Supervisor Biggs has an action.
Okay, well, um, I did attend the school board meeting, I brought to you that evening through email, and then your action tonight, the concern that they had there for those capital monies, and then I turned, I attended the library board meeting, uh, last Wednesday evening, and it was down at Meadowbrook, and I just want to, uh, say that I just, I always love going down there because that, that facility is so nice and it's so well-used, and the staff there are so nice, and, uh, we, we had our library board meeting there, and Mr. Creed, it was just a, it's always a nice and friendly experience down there. It's really, it's a good, and I know it's well-used.
Should, should say that everybody should have come to our Vegas night.
Was it good?
This past, yeah, it was right, quite nice.
Yeah, that's a good facility. The only other thing I want to say, and, um, it's really not anything to do with, well, it sort of does with us, and that is, um, when I watched the events, um, unfold during the horrific time in Boston, one thing that, that came to me again was the law enforcement, and it's the same thing that happened April 16th. Law enforcement seems to be the one group of individuals, no matter where they represent, that can come together and work together at a moment's notice, and I just feel like all forms of government could take a lesson from them, um, you know, it's not, you know, you don't have time to argue over this or that, or whose territory it is, or what money's being spent, you just do it, and you do it for the well-being of the citizens, and I just thought it was so neat to see the citizens express their support for law enforcement after all of that happened, and, um, and that just sort of, uh, was a very positive thing after all the heartbreak and terror and everything else people were experiencing, even if they weren't, I hope that isn't one of them there, uh, in Boston, so I just wanted to make a statement about that, it just seems like, I don't know, I just can't say enough about law enforcement and first responders, just can't say enough about those people and what they do, and that's all I have to say.
And Supervisor Tuck?
Just a couple of things, one, with the $575,000 that was allocated tonight, if you take the monies that, in regards to do the math, we have now exceeded what the school board initially requested by hundreds of thousands of dollars. That's, everybody's got a different opinion about that, but they have an operational budget, they make decisions about what is a priority, whether that is repairing a roof or putting in security, they have to make those decisions, and, and that is a decision that they have to make, all of us have to make, and, and, and when we're allocating those funds. And the average taxpayer in the last seven years, $200,000 house has watched their taxes go up to $520, $520 is a lot of money for a lot of folks, and that's less than actually the average house in Montgomery County. So, we watch that kind of radical tax increase take place and hit the pocketbooks of some of our citizens, just average citizens, and watch it go up $500. So, that's something for us to think about over the next six, 12 months as we get ready for the next budget season. I, I also want to talk a little bit about Boston from a different perspective, and, and my initial reaction after that suspect in Boston was apprehended was relief that the people that were in harm's way were taken care of, but also know that we were satisfaction knowing that our country was going to practice what we preached. We were going to hold a man, and we were going to give him a right to an attorney, and we were going to have a trial, and we were going to disclose that evidence, uh, because that's the kind of country that we are, and these fundamental rights that our soldiers have fought and died to protect, but there was a time during these debates that they were actually called into question. In the past, when we wavered on these rights, we've regretted, and I've looked at the Japanese internment camps during World War II, US citizens of Japanese descent were, had their property taken, had their freedom taken, had their liberty taken, all in the name of safety. Benjamin Franklin said it well, he said, "They that can give up an essential liberty to attain a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." Were they any combatants? No, but our government tossed aside their rights all the same. Perhaps Justice Thurgood Marshall said it even better than Franklin when he stated that grave threats to liberty often come in times of urgency, when constitutional rights seem too extravagant to endure. And one last thought, as we look and reflect in the pressures that are on some of our folks, if we torture, if we hold them without trial, if we set up, set up special courts to try their cases, if we set aside our ideal, ideals, haven't, they won't. Thank you.
And, Mr. Gabriel?
I don't have anything so important to report, um, but, this is, uh, this is a smaller issue that, uh, that I've brought up before, and I just wanted to kind of bring this again to the board's attention, is the, the issue of the, the role of the school liaison from this board. Basically, there, there, it seems to function, the school liaison, that, it isn't actually the liaison to the school board, because there's, there's a meeting between the board chair and the other, the chair of the school board, um, the, the school board liaison, at least is, the, the appointed member just goes to meetings and sits there and listens quietly and then kind of reports back, um, which seems to be increasingly in a relative position, especially now that all the meetings are recorded and we can, we can watch them many a time, so, I think at some point it would probably be worth revisiting exactly, um, what the school board liaison role is, and if it's necessary for that position to continue, either perhaps the school board liaison should be the one who meets with the, the school board chair or someone from the school board, or perhaps the school board liaison should simply be the board chair, and then that would free up a member of, of our board to perhaps fill another role, instead of just, just kind of sitting there quietly during the meetings, so.
May, may I, um, speak to that a little bit, just to give you a little bit of history? The school liaison, um, position was a position that was part of the board supervisors, and before, um, 1996 was never really, no one ever went to the meetings, and so, when I became a member of the board of supervisors, I offered to do that, and during that time, we were taking the baby steps to see about both boards working together, so by the third, my third year on the board, when Mr. Gorman was chair, he was the one that came up with the idea of trying to have the two board chairs and the two, um, the, you know, the county administrator and then the school superintendent meet, and Matt is right, because, um, you know, prior to that, uh, things would happen at the school board meetings that weren't reported back to the board supervisors, they would just read about them in the paper. An example would be, um, like if, uh, if something went way over money, like I think it was out at Reiner when they were building the new Auburn Middle School, maybe it was going to be $2 million over cost, and the way that was going to be handled if I hadn't happened to be at the school board meeting was, they were just going to read about in the paper, there were no phone calls made, but because I was there, I could call and I could tell people that this, my board members, that this was happening, but now that we have a better working relationship, and I think Matt has a good point, and now that the meetings are, are televised, it might be something to, to revisit.
Do we want to put that in a future, uh, work session, or just a resolution, or?
I typically watch, um, the board meetings, and I get to fast forward through a lot of the, some of the things that I don't necessarily think are important. As far as having a board member there, there is, like Mary's email that went out before the board was released on video, um, that was very helpful, I'm sure that you were able to get some of that information directly from the school board almost immediately,
Yeah.
And, and to be able to get that out, and so, I-
I agree, I, I just think it should be the same person who's, who's having conversations with the chair as attending the meetings, like that should be part of the same, the same thing, like me being there to be a secretary is not, you know, just to kind of report back, I mean, that's, that's not really an efficient use of, of anyone's time, whereas if, you know, someone who is, is, is having a conversation at kind of the, the chair level and is also, you know, there to report back on specific things, then, then they know about, you know, they're better able to contextualize the discussions and, and perhaps have a better report back to, to this board, so, again, maybe, maybe it might be a work session thing, maybe it's just something to think about, uh, again, I just think in some ways this is a position that is in some ways outgrown, its usefulness might be, just need to be rethought, I think we're doing it because we've always done it, or we've done it since 96, and maybe we just need to, to think about how we're doing it, and maybe we could do it a little bit better, that's all.
I know that, um, I think is, we need to have as much, um, communication as we can possibly have, um, but I just happened to think of something that, um, the school liaison is the board and the administrator and the superintendent and the chair of the school board, what about having the liaison, um, attend that meeting, except that it means two board members and, two board members and then it becomes public, right?
No.
Three. More than three from each board. More than three from each board.
Right.
We've had that discussion.
I was just thinking... I don't know if you've had that discussion or... I just think... I know Mr. Meadows has been giving us a report from the school board liaison and that's been very helpful because I know for the seven years that I was on the board and for the two... The school board and for the two that I was chair, there was almost zero. Whatever was communicated was done by the superintendent and certain board members on the board of supervisors and nobody, even the chair, often was not made aware of what was happening. So I don't know. I don't know if those are things that you ought to consider or around robin for board members to be on there.
I sort of think this way. I think probably if you put all the obligations separately that we had at different days of the month and everything, it would be about five hours long.
Oh, I know.
And to think about it and to say to add maybe another member to the liaison committee, I don't think that's sufficient use of his time. Because, I mean, if you look at the number of meetings, it's like, you know, sometimes I look and I says, man, I must've been crazy to become a member of the board of supervisors when you... Every day of the week, you would be or you somewhere like this. And when you go to like Cleo, I'm on like about...
Oh, yeah.
Four subcommittees that meet differently than the Cleo meeting and...
Or you don't got it organized.
And things like this. But I think we just have to use our board assignments and things wisely and not overload the plates of our members.
Well, I agree, but I know I went to Westville for how many years before you started going?
Yeah, when I started going, they didn't have like the one-stop... I was there at the one-stop committee... I mean, the executive board. Now, I mean, anytime I take an official call to a meeting, I said, well, can you come up here tomorrow? Yeah, I can come up here tomorrow.
Right.
Come up here next week? Yeah, I can come up here next week. I mean, you know, it's...
Well, there were a lot of...
Do what you got there.
Yeah, there were a lot of meetings there and there were a lot of meetings we go to and I understand what you're... Why you think it should be revisited and I agree. It's okay, but I'm just thinking if we're so transparent...
Mr. Creed?
I just got one question. We'll take it in a second. And that has to do with how many viewers can actually see this? I guess they get it off on cable?
Blacksburg, Christiansburg cable, but not any satellite use.
But we do have it on YouTube.
But it's on... It's on.
And that's what I'm saying. I'm just wondering how many that is. It's nice for those who get it, but I'm thinking that we're probably only... The ones who get it are only probably seventy-five percent or so of the population and...
Probably not.
It's a computer.
Or I doubt if it's that many. Maybe fifty percent, if even that. So, you know, I'd just like to kind of... I guess it was... Who's it with? Atmos or...
I believe we're also have it on YouTube.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is, you know, we do that and then we... If we got something that we need to advertise, have to advertise, then we put it in the Birds.
Yeah.
And not only did I not get the paper, but if I did, I wouldn't be reading the Birds. So, you know, I just wonder how many people actually get to see this? And whether it's this or the school board or whoever it may be. And I'd just like somebody to maybe... Shouldn't be that hard to call up and say, hey, we need to know.
How many subscribers do you have on?
Subscribers in the Montgomery County do you have? And get back because I think sometimes we think we're doing more than we're doing.
And the other thing is you gotta be interested in looking at it.
That's right.
So if you make it available a hundred percent, only five percent wanna watch it, it's all you're gonna reach.
It'd be a different story if we had Comcast all over the county, you know, so to speak. But we have, I guess, a hodgepodge of satellite dishes and so forth. But I think the majority of the people who's not in that can get it right here on their computer.
If they got computers.
Yeah, if they got computers and, you know, to think about it.
Well, there's a tremendous lot of people don't have computers.
Alright, my report.
You know, I want to apologize for this, Jim, but I... And I wanted to make sure again that I don't want to be excluded from any discussions regarding the Apco power line. It is affecting property and so I wanted to publicly state that I don't want any emails from anybody discussing it, anything along those lines. I don't want anything from the planning commission or anything else along those lines because it is affecting property that I have partnership in.
Okay. My turn. And boy, do I have a story.
Don't tell me.
Last week.
H E M P.
I spent a couple of days on the hill and it was...
Not at county expense.
Not at the county expense. And it was quite a trip. I saw eight of our state congressman's offices. Morgan Riffith definitely wanted to take a photo op with me, so he came out in the middle of a committee meeting between votes and we talked a little bit about the hemp project. I was... We had meetings in both of our senators' offices and I got to meet Kentucky Congressman Tom Massey, who introduced the bill in the House. And this is the Industrial Hemp Farming Act. So we were very, very busy, a lot of chaos at that time because of the Boston shootings, because of the Ryson incident, because of the bomb threat at the Senate Building. And somehow or another, the security was pretty easy to get through but with all that mess going on, but it was really... I'd say it was a pretty good trip. We added one co-sponsor to the bill, Congressman from Florida. And I didn't really have anything to do with that except for we stepped in the office at the right time and when he walked out, he co-sponsored it, so it was pretty good. But it was just a good trip. Little... And I never want to hear anybody complain about traffic. I drove twenty miles to the metro and the first day I went, it took me an hour and a half to go two miles.
Yeah, that's about right.
It was.
That's about right.
So, anyway, that's all I've got.
Mr. Police Life forgot to thank, and this is from all of us, thank the staff for the information about the League of Women Voters where we're gonna go tomorrow evening for giving us information to take with us. Thank you.
Can that just bring something up that I need to do? I've thought about it ten thousand times when I was at home and never think about it when I get up here. But I wanna thank the board for the flowers they sent when my sister passed away. I appreciate it and I really... It's something that really touches me. The last one that I had, I think, from this board was maybe when my brother passed away and I still have it. So it's just something that means a lot to me. Thank you.
Say one thing quick. We have lively...
All the questions.
...lively debates up here. I mean, sometimes I don't know whether I need to wear my stripes to referee or whatever or to duck down under the counter, but it is the business of the board and I just wanna tell you that I love and I respect each one of you. I might just don't agree with your opinion, but we get along great.
Call this meeting adjourned.